April fourth or April ninth.
April sixth.
Or the other. But we voted on past today.
May.
Uh, May second. So we were very confused why these people were already on our campus for schools.
Without the backup all this.
And I believe, may I speak?
Sure.
Okay, the whole program was given to us from the borough. It was almost like dumped at us that we had to say yes to this program. And also the Henry rule that we had to say yes for his position, but we didn't.
Before we go, before we go forward in, in any details.
Okay, anyway, so I always felt that this was, we are board of education. We work for our kids. We work for our teachers. We are the ones who concerned the most about our kids and our teachers, our people in the school. And we have to know, we have to come up with an idea that, oh, we really feel that our schools are not safe. So we have to do something for this. But we never felt from the first place. I've been telling this ever since May. We need to talk to parents. We need to talk to students. We need to talk to teachers first. How they feel about the security of the school. Are they really feeling so intense? They, they're under such a pressure of feeling unsafe coming to school. And also for a certain period, there were a couple of students came and they were very much marched saying that we feel so unsecure. We're, we feel so insecure, like next day, I'm feeling like something is gonna happen. Even this afternoon, like before I go home, that somebody might come into the school. I, I remember that student really made a big deal. And I felt that, oh, okay, so these people, of course, okay. But that's how I felt. You know, it's all my fault. I have to say that. It's all my fault. I didn't study enough. I didn't have enough power to say no from the first place. And it's my fault. And I think it's our shame that it was on the newspaper. You know, that's what's going on. And now I would like to correct it and make the right steps from the first and on. That what we should really do as a whole community. We're going to ask people, we're going to ask everyone involved. And we would like to have the right measure. And we would like to have the right amount of money, how much it's gonna cost. And whether we have to have a more power about keeping our school safe. It's not borough, of course, borough granted all these things. We've been very gracefully thankful. But we have to know more. We have to do better job as a whole. And by terminating this contract from the, the beginning, it's like the first step that we should do. And then we will have to study all together. I'm going to keep on consult. You know, I have really never done my, my share enough. I'm sorry. You know, I've been, apologize for that last time when all this thing was on the newspaper. But I had to fight for more strongly, I believe. So this time I'm going to do the better job. I'm going to promise all of you, I'll definitely work very hard. And this thing should be done in this manner, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jane. I also wanted to add, I'm sorry?
I just wanna say that, no, it's not all of your fault, Stephanie, uh, to, uh, for this. I think we were misguided, misdirected. I really, uh, was taking the direction from our legal resources on what to do. I thought everyone was checked out. As I said, I did not attend this May second meeting because of employment obligations. But I was under the impression that, uh, we had all of this checked out thoroughly. So I think that we were misguided.
Okay. We are, we are, I'm sorry.
I raised an after. I think I have a right to say something. I mean, Tom said what I wanted to say. We were misguided. And the important thing is idea, idea was okay. You know, it was good. Especially we don't have to pay anything. And security of children is the most important one. And then they will be secured. This everything went okay in that idea. But the process went wrong. I didn't know about, there is something called pass the trash law. Which just signed by Governor Murphy. And Board of Ed in New Jersey was pushing that law. Which was like checking out all the new employee of their background check regardless of who it is. And we as a normal board member and normal citizen, I'm sure same as the parents. We didn't know about the actual process of what is next thing to do, what is the next thing to do. I feel same as the Stephanie felt that we were kind of misguided. We were pushed. So I feel bad about it. And I'm sure we have to go back and find out to the proper procedure. Without this news media, I'm sure this went pass through and nobody probably gonna raise any voice about that. So for that, I'm very shameful that I didn't follow up the regular process. And I feel bad that we were just purely misguided by some people. I'm, I'm very upset about that, that, that one. You know, that there is a reason why there is a protocol. There is a reason why they made this process that we supposed to follow it. And they check on, open that by the Board of Education in New Jersey. I mean, Board of Education of New Jersey. And we didn't follow them. And now this is a time to follow. Okay, so that's what I wanna say.
Jason, you make a great point. At the time, I voted with my heart too. People just killed at a massive shooting. You know?
Sure.
Everybody on this board, they voted with their heart and their mind. Yes, we don't know all the ins and outs of what had to be done technically. But that wasn't our responsibility. Our responsibility, I felt, for me, was protect our students, our faculty. That's it. Okay? Was it kind of rushed? Yeah, it was kind of rushed. But we didn't have any knowledge of that these shootings were gonna happen or they were gonna continue. Okay? So we kind of reacted. And I feel bad that Stephanie has to say, geez, I, it was my fault or you have to say. I don't think it's anybody's fault. I think we went with our heart. That's what I believe, that we all went with our heart and our mind towards kids, towards the faculty, Barnabas, everybody, Jeffrey, this whole board, everybody.
We all see, yes, we, we, yes, we understand.
You're right. We wanna get, we do wanna start this program all over.
Board of you member as a regular ordinary.
But let him finish it.
We do wanna, again, my personal thought, my personal thoughts. Yes, we have to get rid of what we have, put something brand new in. Thankfully, we have the chief here, you know, uh, from South Brunswick, tell us some of the options, okay? Uh, which I didn't know. I knew some of the options, I don't know what they meant. He gave us the information to react. I think, again, in support of it, that, right, that we terminated, we start kind of fresh. I got some things to think about personally from reading this. I'm sure every board member's got some things to think about personally. And gotta get the audience, you know, the town, uh, input also, all right? And I'm sorry for taking up the time, but I just wanted to say that point.
But you're absolutely right. We as a board member, it's our responsibility to correct the mistake that we have if we made a mistake. And I think we made a mistake.
Yeah, but somebody have to responsible for this whole school. I wanna bring up the issue that we are as a, uh, ordinary people taxpayer in Palisades Park. We elected as a, you know, from the, the town people. And we are not professional. We have our own job. We, we are dedicated for our time to helping the town and, and the community. But we hire, we pay a lot of money for, uh, board attorney to protect us and protect school and helping the community. But someone has failed. The professional job failed. The guardians was wrong, no backup check. And he push us, force us to hire Henry Lu as a, uh, the councilman for coordinator. Okay, I'm sorry, but still, uh, so which means, which means everything forced us to wrong way. I think that someone has to responsible for this.
Now let me speak. I'm not here for right now, immediately, who did it, let's do the blame game, let's cut him off first. I wanna make sure that if we're gonna cancel this program, it's a plan B. I wanna make sure that our school is still protected. And while we, while we either trash this, uh, plan or make a new plan or bring some new security in. What is our plan B?
Yeah, but, but I'm not, I'm not, I'm not conscious with our attorney.
To the board right now, we have the chief of police over here, we have many experts here. What is our plan B if we're gonna cancel this agreement?
Well, that's why we're having discussion. That's why the study is going to be done.
Yes.
But within the survey, there won't be any security.
Yes, we do.
What is this?
Yes, we do.
What is security?
Careful about what is discussed publicly.
I mean, this is getting to be, um.
I just want the school still to be protected.
We do have security at the moment.
Mr. Wu was in the buildings today, was he?
Yes.
Yes. We do have security.
What kind of security?
Be careful about what comes.
Yeah, we do have security.
So you're saying that that security is suffice enough while we, while we, while we shuffle.
Mr. Kim.
I have some security right now.
As the chief said, the security guard could have been a retired officer on the second floor when an incident took place on the ground level. I don't know that we'll ever have enough security. The, the proper security is vetting the minds of these terroristic individuals who are conducting these crimes.
I understand that even though we have armed security, the guy have taken a piss and he wasn't there. I totally understand that, all right? My point is, I wanna be liable right now.
Mr. Kim, I can assure you, there, there is security to, there are multiple layers of security right now. And all of, I walked through all the buildings today without the sheriff. The security was there.
Let me say just to me, to me personally, just me.
Yes.
With you and Dr. Cirillo making that statement, I feel comfortable.
And we will, and we will explore more options as well. So this does not end here with just the termination of an agreement. So we have a, we have a motion. That's a motion to terminate. Is there a second?
Wait, I'm very sorry. One more question, one question. Who's right now in this, in this contract security? How many is working right now? Nobody's working either?
Nobody's working.
Nobody.
So currently as it's. So right now, there's a, is there a second on the?
Yes.
Stephanie's second.
Okay.
If you need to go in the close to discuss the current security situation, I suggest you do that.
Okay.
Otherwise.
Maybe after the audience.
All right, can we have roll call please? So we vote? Roll call please.
This is a motion to terminate the current shared services agreement with the borough.
Correct.
Seconded, Barnabas made the motion, seconded by Stephanie Wu, I mean Stephanie Jane.
Yes.
Stephanie? Yes, okay. Jeffrey Wu.
Yes.
Paul Kim.
Yes.
Kenny Wu.
Yes.
Connie Wayne.
Yeah.
Stephanie Jane.
Yes.
Jason Kim.
Yes.
Tom Matarazzo.
Yes.
Barnabas Wu.
Yes.
And just to assure the public, we are not gonna end with just the termination. We will explore and make sure our kids, faculty, staff are all safe. Um, is there anything else for the board to discuss?
Uh, added to this, this, uh, program, since April, our board attorney, he was the wrong guardian to make happen this. And we are on finger from the old people. So I think our board attorney, I'm not comfortable, I'm not conscious with him anymore. So I wanna, uh, fire him as a our board attorney.
I think you have to rise notice this concerning that, please. He doesn't, he doesn't.
No, this is too serious.
He doesn't, I'm not surprised by that.
No, it's not a matter of too serious. Do we need a rise notice or not?
I'm asking.
No, we do not.
We do not?
So that was a motion to terminate?
Yes.
Our current counsel? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
There's a hearing on October fourth. There's a hearing on October fourth.
Does the board want to discuss the counsel issue in closed session? Stop the question.
Does the, does the board want to determine, uh, anything during the closed session regarding the current counsel?
Should we advise or says the?
It's up to the board.
I'll, I'll. Uh, I don't think.
We discuss it privately.
I'll leave.
Since our lawyer cannot answer that question, I'm asking the, uh, another lawyer. Do we have to have a closed session?
You don't have to. The board is, there's, there's a motion and a second on the floor. The board president is running the meeting. He could poll everybody to see if they would like to discuss it in a closed session. Counsel is something that's, um, very important to the board.
Do it in open.
You can, I think you should discuss it, but that's up to you. I'll leave, I'll leave the, uh, the assembly. We can discuss it privately.
I will also leave too. That's a very important decision to make.
Okay, so then, is there a motion? Um, was there anything else then besides we?
We have to discuss.
Well, we have to go into closed session for that, right?
I'm asking, I asked that, you have to do the closing.
You don't have to.
No.
It's your option if you'd like to. But should the board want to go to closed session?
Just be careful, what you're saying in open session.
Yes, poll each, poll each, um, board member. This, yes, uh, we'll start with Ms. Fine. Yes, Mr. Green?
The question was, I'm sorry.
To go into closed session to discuss this further.
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Um, Dr. Matarazzo?
Yes.
Okay, I think that's a, that's enough, so we're going to close.
So why don't you take a collision?
To discuss in closed session.
I'd like to table this motion and have a motion that we go into closed session to discuss this matter.
Is there a second for that?
Yes, before we go to close, maybe we can hear from the public.
Yeah, they're just tabling it for now. Okay. Was it, was there a second for this?
To table.
To table.
Is there a second? Um, do we need roll call or should we just?
Roll.
All I? Roll call for the tabling for the?
To table this motion.
Who made the motion to table, I'm sorry?
I, I mean, I'm pushing down.
And Mr. Bruno. Kenny Bruno.
Jeffrey Wu.
Yes.
Paul Kim.
Yes.
Ken Wu.
Yes.
Connie Wayne. Stephanie Jane.
Yes.
Jason Kim.
Yes.
Tom Matarazzo.
Yes.
Barnabas Wu.
Yes.
So then, before we go into closed session, I'd like to open it up to audience participation. Is there a motion to that?
I'd like to open audience participation.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Please remember, uh, as per policy, we have three minutes for each, uh, participant. Please say your name for the record. Yes.
Marie Pasantes. First off, I wanna thank the chief. You were excellent, although I know everything you talk about because I work for a school district. Everything he said is correct. I think it should be someone who is not involved in the community and an outside party giving us advice. Because he works with the state. Everything he said, I can give you the names of the people he's talking about that run those departments. I didn't know you were part of the legislature. Thank you very much. I also, um, printed out stuff for you because apparently last week you gave me a lot of questions. I expected you to do the research, but I'm more than happy to print out anything you need ever, okay? It's all online and easily accessible. The Department of Ed is very accessible. Dr. Gambino, who knows Mr. Cirillo well, is the school safety liaison for Bergen County on the state level. You can call him anytime, he will call you back. His cell number is in here along with email. Everything is in here. Yes.
Who asked you to do the homework?
I'm a parent. I have children that go to school here. If someone's going, oh, no. I did it as information so you all know.
Okay.
So you have knowledge. That's me wanting you to know because I see that there's a lot of misinformation here.
Sure.
And it's terrible because you're educators. You represent all of us, I keep saying that.
Yeah.
I do this because I'm a parent. I do this because I want my children to be safe and not just my children. I told you this last week, all children.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought somebody asked.
No, 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 I do this, it's my ownness because I wanna make sure this is done correctly. I've come here since the initiation of this whole project. I believe in it, I work with them, I work with officers. I do not work with non-employed bond enforcement. I'm just saying that.
I'm happy to hear more information.
Everything he said is correct and factual. There is no deviation from that. Nowhere in there, did you hear mentioned what we agreed to? Because first of all, the MOA should be thrown away because it was not followed. Anytime a contract is not followed, the minute it's not followed, it's dissolved. Whether you vote on it or not, you should know that. And I don't have to be a lawyer to know that. You should know that. We all know that. Anybody who breaks any part of a contract, the contract is dissolved. Okay? So, also, school safety specialist, I know we voted on one on June twenty seventh. He hasn't attended one meeting. He's supposed to be registered with the state. He can also tell you about that chief because I'm sure he knows about it. There's an academy he needs to attend and he needs to be certified within one year of appointment. The last academy for this year, because I speak to Jeff Gale who runs the academy, he's also in here. He works for the Department of Ed. He's a former state police officer. The last one is in December. As of September sixth, when I spoke to him last, no one from Palisade Park has registered. That's the last one for this year. I have all the information, all the laws. You can read it, you can go online. I printed it for you to make it easier. All the phone numbers are in here.
Thank you.
You know all this. Okay? I'm sure you know all the people too, Dr. Cirillo. This information is sent to the superintendent. I have more.
Thank you.
So the superintendent is well aware of all of this. Because the superintendent was the one they emailed.
Ms. Pasantes, just for clarification, you mentioned that for the school safety specialist certification, you had spoken to someone?
Yep.
Who was that individual?
Jeff Gale. He works for the Department of Ed.
J E F F G A.
He's right on there. If you go to page, I don't know which page I put it on, but he's there.
Thank you. And just for clarification, I'll be in touch with Mr. Gale in the morning. We have had someone trained for a full week to be a school safety specialist.
Who is that?
Mr. Donahue.
Yes. And was he registered with the state as it's supposed to be by law?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and did he take the online class and register for the academy?
I will double check about the online class. He did attend a week-long session as required by law.
Frank Donahue is, uh, is a councilman. Is there company interest?
I thought so, but I'm not gonna mention it.
Jeff Gale. Time to look into it.
Yeah, I know. Any other questions? Just call the Department of Ed. They were very, very helpful. Their cell numbers are there, their emails are there. They answer, maybe not right away, but in a day or two.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate the information.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Yes.
Please say your name.
My name is Suri Albrecht.
Thank you.
Want me to add us too? I believe in Richard Wilberon all week seven, and I believe that the attorneys and vice do not dictate. Am I correct?
Yes.
All I have to say.
Anyone else in the audience? Yes.
Kathy Donahue, co-president of the PPA. Will you be taking formal action when you come back from, um?
Possibly, yes. Anyone else in the audience? Yes.
Sandy Cortezo. Um, I've lived here all my life. I wanna thank you all for having the kids' best interests at heart. Uh, as an educator for thirty-four years and being on the county, um, tabletop planning for emergency evacuations and active shooters, I get the emotional part. So I think all of you acted with the right intentions. Um, I, I'm sure all of you at, on this board know, um, that things become political here sometimes. So I think we should try to move forward and not bring any of this stuff up from the past because it's a waste of time. And I think we just need to move forward for the best of the kids and the teachers and staff. So I wanna thank you and commend you for doing the right thing now.
Thank you, very much. Yes, in the back.
Hi, I'm here to talk to you. I apologize to the staff of the meeting. I was approaching a baseball game. Um, I just wanna be, um, totally, uh, on board. If there's definitely security in the schools.
Yes, there is.
I know the children and the teachers and the parents in my, in the group where what I hang out with is very concerned. That they wanna make sure, even if it's not the safety officers that were in the schools from last year, that there is definitely protection.
There is. Yes, sir.
Okay. I have worked personally with most of those safety officers that were, um, hired last year. I was captain of EMS for several years and worked closely with everybody. Um, I don't know if you'll hire them back. Um, I'm very upset about everything that's hit the news. I don't think the people that were involved endangered any children. Whether whatever they did in their past had nothing to do with children. And I wanted to bring that up. It's just such a tarnish on the town how everything looks. Um, I thought they did a fantastic job. The kids were more at ease, the teachers were at ease, and, uh, the parents knowing that there, it was safety in the schools. I have two children in the school. And I'm pretty concerned about all the issues that go on.
Thank you, very concerned. We, we are on the same boat. We truly care about the safety of everyone. Um, I can assure you, there is security in the schools right now.
I know money.
Multiple layers. Yes.
Money is always an issue. You guys are bouncing this money issue around. There's no price line on a child's life, or an adult's, or anybody's life. So money should not be an issue with trying to get the safety in order.
Thank you very much, yes.
Not for the child.
Yes. Okay, one, one last question.
One last, yes. Fear does not dictate what we do and it never should. Vetting has to happen for anybody that enters the school. And I know everyone has good intentions, but under no circumstance can anybody by law be put in a school without proper vetting. I understand what you're saying and I agree, and that's why I'm here. But that's why I'm here. They need to be properly vetted. That was my, from day one.
And that's why we are doing everything.
And that's why when this was exposed, I researched it, I called people, it's not difficult. I knew a lot about it already, being in a school, but we needed details. And I gave them to you and we spoke about it. They were not followed. And we need to move forward. We're not gonna, I don't wanna talk about this anymore, but in the future, it is up to you. And we will be watching and I will be reading and I will be going on the website. And I would appreciate if the website was more transparent and had more information. It is, I'm, don't even know what word to use except pathetic, our website. Go on Fort Lees, go on Englewood's, go on Richfield. Information at any, and we cannot keep using our technology people. It's been for years. Poor Ms. Montemuro knows. I email her for the past five years because the website never has anything on it. The minutes aren't on it, the board meetings aren't on it.
The minutes are on it.
Well, they get there timely. It takes a little while, I know. We try. Board meetings, dates are not on there, nothing's on there. Your names aren't even on there. Bare, well, they have your names, but if you go to other ones, yes, your names are on it.
Yes.
They have bios, they have contacts for the board members, they have everything, we have nothing. Unless we do our due diligence and Google you and by miracle find your name or come to one of these meetings, you didn't even have placards till someone made them with marker. This is a great town, please take pride in it, you're there representing us. I'm here because I like this town, I know most of you, I know a lot of you, please take pride like we do. We trust you, I told you this last week. Don't be bullied, don't be intimidated, you cannot lead a school, there are intimidation laws for kids, why aren't there for adults? I bought the hu, the intimidation bullying policy for the kids, I was gonna read it. But I was bullied last week, I don't like that, I'm an adult. That's why to, this week I brought you paperwork because when you stand up here, it's not a comfortable thing. But this is from our kids and I'm not gonna go home and forget it. You can do whatever you want any other day, but putting guns in our school, you better do it correctly. I believe in it, I work with them every day in my school, that, I know it like the back of my hand. Search and seizure, I know to do it before they get there because I can search a kid better than they can. It's the truth.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can I reiterate that we were under the impression that they were vetted, at least I was under the impression.
Oh, I know, that's why I said the past is the past, but moving forward.
Absolutely.
Do your due diligence, please.
Okay, thank you, can we have a motion to close the audience participation? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Uh, motion to go into closed session?
I make a motion to go to close.
Seconds?
Second.[1796.41]